So, uh, this is a presentation that we have, uh, that we made, um, few months ago for introducing and giving the meaning of Baba's Aarti, Abba's Bujave Aarti in Telugu, in the local language. Uh, so, we, we will go straight into, into the story of this Aarti. Uh, there are two versions of, uh, of how this Aarti came up. Uh, one, one that's in the Lord Meher and other from Mehera Meher, you know, that was, uh, Mehera Sri collection. Uh, so as we all know, the Bujave Nar Aarti is, is also referred to as the Gujaratati Aarti for Baba. It was written by Baba himself, um, uh, probably in late nineteen twenty-four or early twenty-five, uh, this was written. So, it was shortly before Baba had begun his silence. Uh, during the stay in Bombay, Mehera recalls that Baba had stayed awake one night, listening to, uh, listening to singing in the street outside his window. She further recalled that during the same night, he composed the Bujave Nar song or the Aarti. In the morning, he sang it for the women and also wrote the words on a piece of paper. Unfortunately, the fate of that paper is unknown today. Baba had composed the melody for the Aarti based on the traditional Indian raga called Bhairavi. Uh, and, uh, this rag, this Indian rag is a devotional morning raga. It is, it is typically sung, uh, in the morning time of the day. Uh, so that's, that's about the rag itself. And, uh, Mehera also recollected that, uh, before Baba began his silence, she sometimes heard Baba singing when the women were living in the ba- the bathing rooms at lower Hyderabad in the early nineteen twenties. Uh, of course, she loved to describe his beautiful voice and felt that keeping silence was Baba's greatest suffering. As we all know, you know, he had a beautiful voice and Baba would himself sing this, uh, this Aarti, uh, himself. And as I said, there's a different account or a different version of, uh, this, uh, background of this Aarti that says that, uh, this, this Aarti was written, uh, in nineteen twenty-six. Uh, after Baba had begun his, had begun his silence. So, nevertheless, this was written, you know, around, around twenty-five, twenty-six or late to nineteen twenty-four, but, uh, this is for sure that Baba had written these words and he also composed a melody for this Aarti. So, Baba's women mainly was singing this Aarti every day in Baba's room at Meherazad after Baba dropped his body in nineteen sixty-nine. Because Baba had once said that this Aarti should not be sung slowly like a dirge. They were always mindful to keep the tempo up. And, uh, as Roshan Kerawala, uh, you know, once recalled, uh, Baba saying that, Baba said to her that the Bujave Aarti was the most potent of all the prayers in this Advent. "I would be present wherever and whenever this prayer is sung." These are powerful words from Baba. Now let's go into, uh, uh, do you want me to sing it first, uh, so that we have the melody and then we go into the pronunciation of the Aarti or what would, what would be the right, uh, approach Angela and everyone?
Yes, I think that we are familiar, but, uh, as a format, that makes sense to sing it first.
Avtar Mehir Baba Ki Jaye Bujhavay Nar Jhalatni Ekar Kudratne Firma Tu Chhela Ghee Ash Bhaktone Ke Bakshay Noorey Ma Tu Ayamur Shad Mehir Baba Charan Par Tujna Dhariye Sar Khudana Zat Thi Waakeef Thai Beetho Mehir Ba Tu Tu Chhe Malik Hakikatno Tu Ashik Bhine Aref Bhii Tu Chhe Dhariae Vahdat Marifatno Hoi Tu Fa Tu Hamo Reheravne Ey Salik Baksh Jaye Jyana Ee Zadnu Ke Tu Parma Atma Jyani Chhenemo Tarey Rfa Tu Khudana Pramno Pyalo Pilavi Mast Hamne Kar Chhettuj Par Jan Sadke Saakia Pide Pema Tu Hamari Naav Bhardariye Tarave Tu Hamen Tariye Hamara Naakhudae Mehir Baba Chhene Ge Ba Tu Hamara Naakhudae Mehir Baba Chhene Ge Ba Tu Bujhavay Nar Jhalatni Ekar Kudratne Firma Tu Chhela Ghee Ash Bhaktone Ke Bakshay Noorey Ma Tu Avtar Mehir Baba Ki Jaye
Beautiful.
Jai Baba. So let's, uh, go into the, uh, into the pronunciation of, uh, the Aarti and, uh, simultaneously we can go onto the meaning of, uh, each line. Are you still seeing my screen or?
Yeah.
Bujhavay Nar Jhalatni Ekar Kudratne Firma Tu Bujhavay Nar Jhalatni Ekar Kudratne Firma Tu Oh God, command that the fire of our ignorance be extinguished. Uh, is, is the speed okay or, uh, do you want me to go slow with the pronunciation? Because this is the first, uh, session, so I want to be sure that we are, uh, are good with, you know, what's expected out of this session.
Slow is good, thank you.
Okay, so I'll go, uh, a bit slower. Bujhavay Nar Jhalatni Ekar Kudratne Firma Tu So, that's, that's the baby break the words. Bujhavay Nar Jhalatni Ekar Kudratne Firma Tu Bujhavay means, uh, extinguish. Nar is the fire. Jhalat is ignorance or darkness. Ekar Kudratne Firma Tu So, uh, the seeker is saying, "Oh God, command that," um, command to the nature. Kudrat means, uh, the nature or, or the divine power. So, command your, your nature or your divine power that it, it extinguishes the fire of our ignorance. I'll go to the next line if that's fine. Chhela Ghee Ash Bhaktone Ke Bakshay Noorey Ma Tu Chhela Ghee Ash Bhaktone Ke Bakshay Noorey Ma Tu Noorey Ma is, is one phrase. Bestow upon your lovers the faith, uh, the light of faith for which they long. And another translation could be, "Your lovers yearn for you to bestow upon them the light of faith." Chhela Ghee Ash is the yearning of, of, of the lover. Bhaktone, bhakt is a devotee or in this context, a lover. Ke Bakshay, bakshay is, is, is to bestow. It, uh, noorey ma, noorey is the light. A is, is the, is the word that joins two words in Urdu. So, uh, just to go back, Baba had, had, uh, written these, uh, this song or this Aarti. Uh, though Baba had, uh, used Gujarati as the thread to, you know, to have, you know, you know, as, as the, as the main language, but Baba has, uh, you know, had used many Urdu and Persian words in this Aarti. Noorey Ma is, uh, is, is, is an Urdu, Urdu phrase, uh, which, which can also go into, maybe, maybe the origin is Persian, but this is not definitely, uh, Gujarati. So, noorey is, is the light and ma is the faith. Your lovers yearn for you to bestow upon them the light of faith.
When, when you say Pr- Persian, when you say Persian, you mean Per- um, Persian, Farsi?
Yeah, Persian, yeah, Persian, Farsi, yes, yes. Okay, so I will, I will go into the next, uh, uh, next verse. Ayamur Shad Mehir Baba Charan Par Tujna Dhariye Sar Ayamur Shad Mehir Baba Charan Par Tujna Dhariye Sar Oh Mehir Baba, oh Murshad Mehir Baba or oh Master Mehir Baba. We lay our heads at your feet. Ayamur Shad Mehir Baba Charan Par Tujna Dhariye Sar Ayam is oh. Murshad of course is master, Mehir Baba. Charan is feet. Uh, per, at your feet. Dhariye Sar, we lay our heads. Sar is head. Dhariye is to, is to lay. Ayamur Shad Mehir Baba Charan Par Tujna Dhariye Sar Khudana Zat Thi Zat Thi Waakeef Khudana Zat Thi Waakeef Thai Beetho Mehir Ba Tu Khudana Zat Thi Waakeef Thai Beetho Mehir Ba Tu Oh Mehir Baba, you have made yourself perfectly aware of your godhood.
Um, Gopi, Jai Baba, it's Farish Day.
Yes.
Jai Baba.
Jai Baba, Farish Day.
Would you be able to please, um, click on the plus sign at the lower right corner of your, uh, page to make things a little larger for us to see better?
Sure, sure, yeah, I'm so sorry for that.
No, no, no problem, just lower right corner of your, yeah, oh, perfect, beautiful.
This is better, okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right, so, uh, I'm not using my laptop, so I, I had to borrow from, borrow from Prakash.
Acha, this is good now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any, any questions, uh, so far or are we good to go to the next verse?
I think Marilyn.
I just want to tell you that, um, in the prayer book, it's, uh, the words are spelled differently. So this is much easier what you're presenting.
Uh huh.
The phonetics of it, so, um, like, let's see. Um, well, I can't find that one, but anyway, um, it just seems, you know, spelled a little bit differently and it's easier. You know, the Betho, is that one Betho?
Oh, yeah.
It's B E T H O, you hit it up and you have it, um, where is it? Let's see, oh, here, down here, B E Y T, Betho. So it just, you know, you want to say bay when you see the Y, but when you see it's just B E T H O is one word. It was a little, it's a little difficult, people don't know that, so this is easier and how could we get this copy?
Yeah, I, I can, you can email this to you all, um, I, you know, I, I, uh, this, uh, yeah, I'll, I'll do a cleanup of, of this document to remove the Telugu words, uh, from this so that it's not cluttered and I can email this to you all.
Excellent, thank you so much.
I understand that this is being recorded also Marilyn, so it's probably going to be posted on YouTube, I think, so, you know, we can look at it repeatedly.
Okay, continue, Gopi, Jai Baba. Is somebody, um, I'm sorry I came late, somebody, um, moderating this or no?
Not really, we're just sort of, uh,
Okay.
A free for all.
All right, thank you Angela, all right. Please carry on.
Sure. Okay, we move to the next verse. Tu Chhe Malik Hakikatno Tu Chhe Malik Hakikatno Tu Ashik Bhine Aref Bhii Tu Chhe Malik Hakikatno Tu Ashik Bhine Aref Bhii Which means, you are the lord of truth. Tu is you, chhe in Gujarati means, uh, are. Lord of truth, malik means lord. Hakikat is truth. Hakikatno means of truth. You are the lord of truth. Tu Ashik Bhine Aref Bhii Ashik means lover, Aref is the beloved. You are the, you are the lover and the beloved in one. At the same time, you are the lover and the beloved himself. The next line in this couple.
Gopi, is, is Aref, um, in Gujarati means beloved? In Farsi, it means, um, learned, uh, master, master.
Yeah, so, right, so, uh, Aref, Aref is not Gujarati here, it is, uh, it is, it is the Persian and Urdu, Urdu word here, uh, we are referring to here. So Aref also, uh, has a context of beloved while it, it, it can say, it, it's about master, uh, but, but here, uh, you know, it means the beloved.
Okay.
So, uh, Ashik, Ashik is the lover and Aref, uh, is, is of course the one whom the lover loves. Um, yeah, you are the lover and the beloved in one. And, and the next line, uh, in this, uh, verse. Hmm, Tu Chhe Dhariae Vahdat Tu Chhe Dhariae Vahdat Marifatno Tu Chhe Dhariae Vahdat Marifatno Hoi Tu Fa Tu Tu Chhe Dhariae Vahdat Dhariae Vahdat Marifatno Marifat.
Uh, pardon me, could you scroll up just a line or two, it's cut off for us?
Sure, sure.
Perfect. Or maybe a little bit too much, but, but it's better, yeah.
Okay, let me, let me move a little up.
That's good, awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Tu Chhe Dhariae Vahdat Marifatno Hoi Tu Fa Tu Being the torrent of infinite knowledge, you are the ocean of oneness. Dharia is ocean. Vahdat is oneness. Dhariae Vahdat is ocean of oneness. Tu Chhe, you are the ocean of oneness. And also the torrent of infinite knowledge. Hoi Tu Fa, Tu Fa is the storm, uh, of, of infinite knowledge. So that, that just gushes and that just, you know, you know, hits, hits you. Being the torrent of infinite knowledge or the storm of infinite knowledge, you are the ocean of oneness too.
I love that, that torrent of infinite knowledge, that's one of my favorite Baba lines ever, yeah. Thank you.
Jai Baba. I'll, I will go to the next verse. Hamo Reherav. Reherav means the wayfarers. Hamo is us, us wayfarers. Hamo Reheravne Ey Salik. Often, uh, this, this word is pronounced wrongly as hey. Hey in, in Urdu and Hindi is, uh, is or are, but this is ey, ey salik. Oh, ey means, oh salik. Salik is the beloved again. Hamo Reheravne Ey Salik Baksh Jaye Uh, this is actually baksh, baksh is the, is the, I think it's a, again a Persian word and also, uh, it is in Urdu as well because many of the Urdu words have come from either Persian or some from Arabic. Baksh is, is to bestow. And, uh, in Gujarati, when this, uh, when this word is used, it is, uh, um, split and pronounced as baksh. Hamo Reheravne Ey Salik Baksh Jaye Jyan Ee Zadnu Oh master or again, uh, this is interchangeably used as beloved. Uh, ey salik, oh master or beloved, bestow upon us the wayfarers the knowledge of Izzat, the only one worthy of worship. Hamo Reheravne Ey Salik Baksh Jaye Jyan Ee Zadnu
So, um, J Y A N is, is pronounced as if it's a J, jyan?
Uh, jyan as a g.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Yes. Yeah. Jyan is, is knowledge. Jyan is, is knowledge. Hamo reharav, yes?
Gopi, hamo, hamo is that Urdu word or is it Gujarati?
Hamo is Gujarati.
Acha.
Hamo reharav ne ey salik. Baksh jay, jyan isad nu. Moving on into the next line of this, of this couplet or verse.
It, it could also mean all. Ha- hamo, all, all wayfarers, to all, bestow your knowledge to all wayfarers.
Yeah, so ham, ham, ham in, in Hindi also means we or, you know, us.
Mm hmm.
So, uh, in Gujarati also, I presume that it is, it's like, yeah, it is all of us or. As I said, it is, it is all of, all of us.
Yes.
Wayfarers.
Yes.
Hamo reharav ne ey salik. Baksh jay, jyan isad nu. Ke tu paramatma jyani chhe. Ke tu paramatma jyani chhe. Ne muqtaar e irfatu. Muqtaar is, uh, a Urdu word. That means the master or the lord. Irfa is a divine knowledge. Hamo reharav ne ey salik. Baksh jay, jyan isad nu. Oh, master, bestow upon us, the wayfarers, the knowledge of Izad. For you, oh, paramatma. You are omniscient and our divine knowledge itself. So, um, ke tu paramatma. You are paramatma. Jyani chhe ne muqtaar e irfatu. So, jyani is, uh. The one who knows or the one who is knowledgeable. Ke tu paramatma jyani chhe. You are, you are omniscient, you are paramatma and you are omniscient, all knowing. Chhe is hey, ne is and. Muqtaar, muqtaar is lord or master. Irfa is divine knowledge, tu again is you. Ke tu paramatma jyani chhe. Ne muqtaar e irfatu. Are we good so far?
Yes.
Khudana premano pyalo. Khudana premano pyalo, pilavi mast hamne kar. Khudana premano pyalo. Pilavi mast hamne kar. Khudana is of God or Gods. Oh, Saki. Um, uh, oh, the tavern keeper or the one who gives the, the wine is, is called Saki. Khudana premano pyalo, pilavi mast hamne kar. Give us, give us to drink the cup of God's love and make us intoxicated. Khudana is of God, the preem is love. Pyalo is the cup. Give us the cup of. Of God's love. Mast is, is the one, as we all know, is intoxicated. Hamne as kar is to make. Give us to drink the cup of God's love and make us intoxicated.
The word, uh, pyalo, is that supposed to be P Y A L O?
Yes, yes, I, I need to do the correction here, this is, uh.
I was thinking the same thing here also, um, Gopi Mayhair. It said, um, yellow, it's spelled differently here, it's easier. To pronounce P I A A L O and then pilavi is P I L A A V I, I love this one. Khudana premano pyalo pilavi, something like that. Mast hamne kar, give us the, to drink of the cup of God's love that we become intoxicated. That's outstanding line, I think, the next one is one.
Yeah. So are you, um, are you saying the one in the prayer book is easier, right?
Sometimes it's not and sometimes yes.
Okay, so we can do, uh, we can probably use the best of both and see, you know, what's, uh, what's easier for everyone to.
Okay, well, pyalo is P I A A L O. Pyalo.
They, they're the same, I, I, I would like to just, you know, suggest we stick with, uh, Gopi's version for now.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Gopi, Diana here, um, I have a question about pronunciation. I know, I noticed with the word must, you added, and I've heard other people add, uh, sort of another syllable. Uh, I would say must, but I hear musta, and I see that happens sometimes with the final D. Is there some rule about when that added sound is given that is general because I wanna know?
Uh, no, uh, it's, it's, it's just must. Uh, it's, it's just the emphasis that we give to the word, you know, when we, we sing or, or when we pronounce, but it is, there's no, uh. This, there's no other syllable there, it's, it's just must.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So.
But I have, I have a question. I have a question, uh.
Mm hmm.
When you're singing it, it is an extra syllable, I would like to see it somehow in the written. Where that helps me when I sing, cause you go, in singing, there is the added syllable. Not after every word, but there is. And, uh, it's helpful if I could see it, this is wonderful to know what the words mean and how to pronounce. But I need an indication in the written about that added syllable, you know? Like if you, like sing that line, uh, khudana, sing that and, and we'll listen to you, we could hear the added syllable. But we can't see in the writing.
Yes, right, so that is, that is to keep the length of, of the line when we sing it. Uh, I know, I'm, I'm not a good teacher, so I, um, I would probably need some help from others to, um. Uh, document the syllables, you know, that would, I understand that will make it easy for you to sing and, uh. Make sense out of that, yeah, I, I would, uh, I would sing this line for you so that, uh, you know, we can see the difference. Khudana premano pyalo, pilavi. Mast hamne kar.
You see, like there, it's musta, and it's not changing the word, but it's just there. So if it could be indicated with just a little check or something, we would know. And it, it would help us to sing along better.
Maybe, maybe a dash E or a parentheses E.
Uh huh.
Some little indication, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Is it an E or an A, I just wrote an A, mastha hamane kar, mastha?
It's uh, not ah or eh, it's kind of a very mute uh sound, mastha, uh.
Mastha.
But nonetheless, the important thing, it is, it is an extra sound is the point, you know?
I understand, it's not indicated here either.
No, it isn't indicated, but just, that would be.
Actually, we do, I mean, maybe we are wrong in the way we sing, uh, so I, I would wanna sing it again. Khudana, sorry. Khudana premano pyalo, pilavi. Mast hamne kar. Uh, we don't have to pronounce that extra syllable, but it's, it's just the habit, you know, the way, the way we sing it. But, uh, um, we, we don't have to pronounce any extra syllable there.
Okay, thank you.
Khudana premano pyalo, pilavi. Mast hamne kar.
Can you try singing it without the extra syllable and see what it sounds like?
That would be o- o- awkward.
It's Diana, it's Diana again, you know, it's not just here, um, Gopi. Um, I, I've seen it many, many places, so, um, it's, that's why I thought there might be some kind of a, um. Not a rule, but a sort of a convention of the language, that that's how, the people just do that. And, um, yeah, I don't mean to create some issue.
Uh, I get it, I get it, yeah.
So I wanted, I wanted to sing it as someone who has this as a native language. I mean, of course, I'm not gonna sound like a native speaker, but, you know, like I'm, like I. I would like to be able to sing it so that I don't stand out for singing it so poorly.
In Persian, it would say, hamero mast kon, and it's simply mast. You know, so it's, uh, the singing, of course, you know, is gonna, uh, pronounce the T. In such a way to merge with the next word, it's a singing thing, um.
I think it's just, sorry, I think it's just with the rhythm.
Rhythm.
Yeah, that's why the, it gets.
Yeah, it is, it is just to keep the meter of, uh, or, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So it's, it's for the length of the line of, uh, of this, uh, of the line when you sing. But as I said, yeah, but we will, we will, we will, we'll have a look at all the words as, as you mentioned. To see if it helps to give an indication, uh, if, if we have to pronounce, uh, an extra syllable anywhere.
Yep.
Or, or even, even like, this is so helpful hearing the words as you pronounce them. And if we had it in writing before us, we could add that little mark for ourself and just do it that way. And just make it simple, it would be simple, cause this is a, this is wonderful to hear the fullness of it, you know? Just, uh.
Right, so, um, I, I'll take an example of this word hamne. Uh, so it's actually hamne, there is no hamne, but, but, uh, there is a A added here.
Yeah.
You see, so, yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
You know how I learned this song, um, my friend Teresa Kaiser had recorded it. And sent me the tape and I just listened to it over and over. And that's how I learned it, whether it's proper or not, I don't know, I hope it is, um.
Mm hmm.
For the most part, but that's how I learned it by listening, I guess that's how I learn also pretty good, the music. So. When we start to sing it, then we could listen to it over and over again, if this is being recorded and it will come more easily, I think. Rosalie and everybody.
Yeah.
No, this is very, very helpful, because, uh, you, you, you say it very clearly, the words, very clearly. So that's a fabulous help, yeah.
Thanks to Baba. So, uh, I would, I would go to the next line, so I would probably go, uh, from the beginning of the words. Khudana premano pyalo. Pilavi mast hamne kar. Chhe tuj par. Jan sadke. Again, uh, it's only sadke, but in the version that we took from, uh, you know, the, the original. Original transliteration, it, it had S A D A K A Y, sadke. But it's actually sadke, sadke. Is, is one word. Chhe tuj par jan sadke. Sa kia. Api de payma tu. Chhe tuj par. Jan sadke. Sa kia. Api de payma tu. Os, oh, oh, Saki. Or, or tavern keeper. We offer our lives in sacrifice to you. Give us this drought. Or we offer our lives in sacrifice to you, oh, Saki, give us this cup of, of, of the divine wine. We, we move to the last verse.
Can you, can you now sing, sing that one that we've just done, so we know where the added thing is?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah, I will sing the whole verse. Khudana premano pyalo, pilavi. Mast hamne kar. Chhe tuj par. Jan sadke sa kia. Pidde payma tu. Chhe tuj par. Jan sadke sa kia. Pidde payma tu.
Wow, so that pidde is a whole different word and they have it attached to.
Yes.
Uh, you, you know, Gopi, I suggest you do it your version. Um, to make it corrected, I have begged, uh, people to, let's come up with a corrected version for a long time. So, uh, feel free to make your edits, at least a copy for us.
Absolutely, I, I will, I will, I will go over this again, because, uh, this was done mainly for. Uh, for people in Telugu to, you know, get the meaning, but, uh, I will work upon it. And then send, uh, you all, you know, the best possible version that we could, uh, you know, that I could, I could make.
Wonderful.
So, so Gopi, that the only one there is after jan, jana. You add that extra syllable after that word, that's what I'm saying, in this, in this whole line, it's, that's the only one there, it's added.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, uh, yeah, as, uh, someone said, uh, that is just for the singing. But the word by itself is jan, there is no jana, but when we sing, uh, in order to keep the rhythm.
Yeah, yeah.
Chhe tuj par.
Yeah.
Jan sad jan is, uh, is, is sang pronounced, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right. So I, yeah, I, I would. So I, yeah, I, I would, what I will do is, I will, I will add the appropriate, uh, syllables within, within parenthesis. So that, uh, you know, that gives an indication. Yeah, understand?
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, we'll move to the last verse, if we're good.
Yep.
Yeah.
And. Naav bhara darie. Hamari naav bhara darie. Tarave toh hume tarie. Hamari naav bhara darie. Tarave toh hume tarie. Uh, only if you steer our ship. Only if you steer or navigate our ship while in mid ocean. Can we remain afloat. Hamari naav, naav is the ship, hamari is our bhara darie means mid ocean. Tarave is, is, uh, is to steer. Toh means only. Hume tarie. Hume means again, we. We will, we will remain afloat. Hamari naav bhara darie. Our ship is in the mid ocean. Tarave toh hume tarie. Only if you steer. That we remain afloat. Hamari naav bhara darie. Tarave toh hume tarie. Hamara na khuda. Hamara na khuda. Eh, Mehir Baba. Hamara na khuda.
But you didn't sing that last one that we went through.
Okay, sure.
To sing it, so I can hear the extra, yeah, please.
Yeah.
So there's only one.
So, so there is no, um, there is no Gujarati that I can see for only if you, only if you, that is somehow understood.
Yes.
Interesting.
Hamari, hamari is a, it's, it's there in Hindi, Urdu and maybe also in Gujarati, I'm, uh, not sure. Uh, hamari naav is a ship. I think that's, that's a common word. Bhara darie is, is a Gujarati, uh, word or phrase. Darya again is, is there in Urdu as well. Uh, tarave i- is a Gujarati word. Toh hume tarie. I think the, uh, from tarave to tarie is, is, is in Gujarati.
Hello, Yushin was asking about only if. The word toh, toh means only if. Uh, toh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. Yes.
And, uh, and Gopi, in the word tarave, I think it needs a double A over there, tarave. It needs a double, double.
Yeah, correct. Right. So we, I, I will need to work on this, uh, so this was taken from, uh, uh, one, one source, I think from Lord Maher or somewhere, but uh, I will, I will work on this to see that we, we get the right, uh, um.
Yeah, and there's certain phonetic, or there are phonetic signs, you know, on the top of letters which indicate which are long vowels or short vowels.
Yes.
You know, you, if you could use that, it would help.
Yeah, that will be easier. Yeah, correct. The, so there, there'll be a dash on top of A, for example, for, uh. Right. Okay, so, hamari naav bhara darie. Tarave toh hume tarie. Hamara na khuda. Eh, Mehir Baba. Hamara na khuda eh, Mehir Baba. Che nige bantu. Hamara means our. Na khuda is the captain of the ship. Hamara na khuda eh, Mehir Baba. Oh, Mehir Baba, the captain of our ship. You are our protector. Che is he. Nige ba is, uh, protector. So I will again sing the whole verse.
Only God could have written this.
Oh, I don't know if this was asked, but, um, did Baba also write the melody to this?
Yep.
Yes.
How did he, how did he do that on a, like, uh, that single guitar you see in, in a photo of, or? Did he sing it out? Uh, was he silent? I can't remember.
Um, yeah, uh, so as, uh, as we have heard, uh, from Mahera's recollection, uh, and it's documented in Mahera, Maher, uh, it was before the silence, uh, when they were in, when they were in Bombay. Baba was awake, um, you know, all through the night and, uh, he heard, he heard a street singer from his window. And the next morning Baba had written this, uh, this song on a piece of paper. And, uh, apparently had s- uh, also sang this, uh, giving a melody.
If I could.
So, so is there a, a Hindu or Gujarati musical notation? Just a curious question.
Um, I, I do not know if it's there, I doubt. But, uh, I can look for it.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking in general, like, um, uh, a, uh, say a raga. Is there a written form of it or is it all done, passed, passed on by ear?
Uh, this, this is a, um, this is based on a raga called Bhairavi in, uh, in the, in the, in the Hindustani classical music. So, uh, uh, it is, it is just based on that, but I, I don't think it's, uh, purely on the raga. So it is an improvised, uh, melody from, from the base raga, which is, which is Bhairavi.
Yep.
Gopi, I think he's asking, uh, in Western music, you know, there's a music sheet with notes, you know, the lines and the dots and all. Is that practiced commonly at all or no? It's all by ear?
Uh, it is, it is practiced, uh, um, when they teach music to students, right? They, they, they indicate the notes like saregama padanisa. But, uh, when, when we sing a, a, any song, like, like example, if I go and see a songbook uh, of, of Hindi bhajans.
Yeah.
There's no notation there. So it's, it's only, they, they, they'll probably mention, uh, what is a rag? And if there's a melody from which, that melody was taken, they will indicate that, but there's no notation.
Do they have keys, like C major, C minor, like that? Do they have that?
Yes, I suppose when it's played on, suppose a violin, that time it will have its notations, that way.
Right.
And also, I just wanted to sort of also say, the word nigeba is so beautiful according to me. It is protector, but the actual, I think, meaning is, uh, nige ba means he always looks, um, you know, upon you. You know, he takes care of you. Nige ba.
Watches over you.
Watches.
Yeah, the one who has a nazar on us.
On you, yeah.
Actually, it's actually, uh, literally it means a guard. Nagafon is a guard, somebody who watches over and protects. Um, also, uh, I was just gonna say, my friend took, uh, in classical Indian singing lessons in Chicago and she would practice what you just said, those, uh, Gopi, can you say those again when they practice the syllables or notes of, uh, the sounds in Hindi? Or, uh, whatever?
Yeah, so the, yeah, the the seven notes.
The notes. The rag, mm-hmm.
Yeah, the seven notes are saregama padanisa. And, uh, there is a scale for, uh, every, every rag, you know, there are different tarts in, in Hindustani classical music. Bhairavi is one of those tarts or this scale or the, or the pattern of the, of, of the rag, uh, which is, which is all based on these seven notes, saregama padanisa.
Could you, uh, sing a couple or one?
Um. Uh, you mean the scale or notes of any raga?
Yeah.
Um.
No pressure.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm not a trained musician, so, uh, I, I'm not really good at, uh, scales and notes, but I know the base raga, so I, I, I can probably sing, uh, uh, alap of rag Bhairavi, which is, uh.
Bolo bolo is there, alapaha is there.
Yeah. So.
I remember, I would just get intoxicated listening to her as I am now. It's wonderful.
The sitar you're playing?
Could you do that again? This guy, I've been listening and I've been working, but this is Michelle. Could you sing that again? I know it's a lot of pressure. I'm a, I'm a song, I'm a singer, so.
This is the scale of rag Bhairavi.
It's interesting, it's a slide. You do a slide at the end, but it, it doesn't seem to be the slide at the beginning.
It's our do re mi fa sol la si do.
Mi, I guess.
Yeah.
It's like a minor.
Great.
Gopi, Gopi?
It's a modal scale.
Hmm.
It's a mode.
Yeah.
I said, there's one thing I just wanted to say. I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate if I say it here or not, but, uh, in, uh, we use the word daman, right? Daman for the hem of the rope. But I find most Westerners saying daman. You know?
Yeah, yeah.
Whether, uh, phonetically it goes wrong.
Right, it is, it is, it is daman, yeah.
Um, but I find most, most Westerners saying daman, daman instead of dam.
Uh, yeah, it wouldn't be the first word that, that has been sacrificed.
Thanks a lot, Yasmin.
How can I change that song now?
Yeah, well, it's, it's good. That's why we're having these. This is so good. Yeah.
Yeah, really.
Well, it's not our fault with daman because, or daman, because they spell it D A M, double A. And so it just seems like it's gonna be on.
Yeah.
It should be D A M.
Yeah.
Yeah, they should be a double.
D double A M, yeah.
I mean, right, that's a nice spelling.
Yeah.
So J Baba, uh, all, and I, I will have to leave now, uh.
Well, thanks a lot for coming.
Gopi, can we, uh, hope for another session to continue or is this a one time?
Uh, yeah, yeah, so, uh, uh, are, are there any questions on, on, uh, this Aarti or should we go to the next one or?
Next one, yeah.
Well, it, it would be nice to have the written before us, before we go on to the next one. I mean, I would, I would use it.
And maybe at the beginning of the next one, once we have the written, just sing it for us once.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. So I'll work on the written, uh, written text or the transliteration. Uh, and then we will start with that in the, you know, next session.
Yes.
And, uh, and then we will m- move into the jahan kalpana uh, or, or the divyasa naatana Aarti by Madhusudan.
Wow.
It's been wonderful. Thank you so much. I love to understand what each word means. I really, really appreciate what you've done today.
Yeah.
Thank you all and thanks to Baba. I, 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 I hope it was reasonable, but I know I'm, um, I don't know if I know everything on, on this Aarti, but.
You know far more than we do, so J Baba. Thank you so.
Now I want everybody to sing it.
Well, let Gopi go and then maybe we can sing it together.
Make the mess of it.
J Baba, all, thank you.
You so much. So next week we'll see him? Will he be back next week?
Check the calendar, I guess.
Yes, I'll be back next week, uh, you know, uh, Baba willing and, uh, it, it is, uh, just that I work late, uh, you know, until this time usually every day, but, uh, Baba willing, I'll be able to make it, uh.
Very kind of you.
Yeah.
Extremely generous and.
Very good teacher.
Thank you so much.
And beautiful voice.
And a beautiful voice.
J Baba, thank you.
Thank you, Gopi.
All those Indians are amazing. I mean, they know Gujarati, Hindi, you know, and English. What do we know? Except for Queen Farishta, who knows everything.
Farishta knows.
The exception is Gopi is a gifted child.
Mostly knows.
I love it, I know, you know, but it, what? I love it, I know, you know, but it, what helped me, that's so important, is to know when they add that ah.
Yeah, me too.
I still want, you wanna sing with the group, you know, it's not a solo.
You know, I I appreciate, I do too, that's why I brought it up and I used the wrong word and I and I. I'd want to apologize right now because I said syllable. And I don't think it's a syllable because as I understand it, a syllable would be part of the structure of a word. These aren't syllables, these are just sounds that are added in.
Yeah, no, in Farsi too, um.
I know.
Words that uh it's it's an accent really, like is it A or O or E or whatever? It's at the end of the word or whatever and and it's not a syllable or a a letter, but it's an accent. And it has a symbol to it, especially in Arabic, they put symbols. But in Farsi, there are no symbols, so you have to kind of know the word. Um and when I do transliteration work with Ward Parks uh in translating Hafiz and transliterating Hafiz. There is an actual um standard that is used, uh commonly accepted standard. Um so um.
Hmm.
It's for for the writing of it, like ah, the long ah has a dash on top of the A.
Mm-hmm.
And then for the A, we usually just do a dash E at the end of the word.
But but it's funny with the da- daman or daman or daman. Either way, it's so clear to the ear what it is, it's daman, you know, it's daman or it's so clear. You don't get mixed up, I mean, it's it's not like slaughter in their language, you know, it's not like that. And that particular word, you know, I'm sure we saw.
In fact, Farishta is Magenori, in fact, Farishta uh Randy Randy took music classes from. Rastumkaka's son, Manik.
Mm-hmm.
Randy Randy Eastman, she took classes from this thing. And there are two or three music college teachers. Like we got Mira Pankra, Mira Kale. And Aimsa Obale, there are some few lecturers. They're teaching the music college Babalas, they sing very nicely and they're music college lecturer. Like uh uh Aimsatu Tirpule, then you have uh um Riddila Tripathi, she's trained in classic. And Antra, Antra Rafti. They are totally trained in music, especially Mira Pankraj. Ne, Ni Mira Kale, she's the principal of music college Jabalpur. Vijay is close friend, Vijay also learned music, whereas we didn't learn any music, we just only by hattie Baba's, I'm imitating. But this is that all.
Yeah, and when I listen to Randy, it's quite obvious that she's.
Randy learned, Randy learned, yeah.
Randy learned from who?
Uh Rastumkaka's son, Manik, Manik.
Oh.
Manik Atidarwala, who is the person who is the author of Adi Sachetana.
Hmm.
Oh, that one I have a hard time pronouncing, that one I need to learn.
It's like we're gonna get to all of them, that's awesome.
That'd be great.
What a great idea.
Hmm, really.
The difference is, they are all Hindustani classicals.
Yeah.
In South India, we learn Karnataka, that's a subtle distinction, but Hindustani is more high pitch rather than. Karnataka.
Um.
And even.